We're calling the order hour, work session of the Ware County Board of Commissioners on Monday, January thirteenth, in our new year, 2020, at three o'clock PM. Begin with a roll call, vote of commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Coe, the president, Commissioner Davis, the president, Commissioner Barnard, the president, Commissioner Carter, the chairman, and the chair is present. This stands for the implication that I've asked Commissioner Carter to do in ways of reading this by Commissioner Coe.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you, Lord, for this day. Help us, Lord, to be mindful of the responsibility that we have and, Lord, that whatever decision we make might be for the betterment of everybody in our county. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve people. And, Lord, most of all, we thank you that we have an opportunity to serve you. Bless this service today. May all we say or do, Lord, bring up honor, glory to you, and you only, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, would you like to thank everybody for coming? Would you like to thank Ms. Meyer from the Eastway Cross Cheryl Arrow for being here? Jennifer Herzog, our attorney, thank you for being here. Dr. Hall, I guess, the heart of it, had to do you at all, but hopefully we'll start a few of that, planning your prosperity. Okay, we'll get right into our agenda. Mr. Kenneth O'Berry is asked to speak. Mr. Kenneth O'Berry, are you here, sir?
He's not here.
No, he's not here?
He's not here.
Oh, okay. All right. Ms. Virginia Pigler, if you'd come up to the podium there, please, ma'am, state your name and address for the record, and proceed with your presentation.
All righty, I'm Virginia Pigler, ginger to most everybody, and I live on Nineteen Twelve Seminole Trail, Waycross, Georgia. My occupation is, who's buddy? I'm here to speak to you today about the upcoming census for the 2020s. In 2010, we had, the census total was thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twelve counted. Unfortunately, about a little less than eighty percent were counted that we know of. That means that in Waycross, Georgia, and any place else that we have, we had counted, that brought in twenty-three hundred dollars per person each year to Georgia. So we want to do a little bit better than that this year. In 2016, every one percent uncounted in Georgia cost our state sixty-eight point six million dollars. The 2010 census, excuse me, provided funding over ten years for Georgia totaling fifteen point nine billion dollars. In education, well, Georgia has two point five million kids birthed to eighteen, and we rank thirty-fourth in education in the United States. Special education, three hundred million dollars, Head Start, two hundred million dollars, Hadoes One Grants, five hundred million dollars, and National School Lunch Program, five hundred million dollars came to Georgia from the federal government. We have formed a local complete count committee to try to make things better for Ware County and each area. Y'all met Mr. Wright, Bad Wright, most of you heard him speak about the census. But one person didn't do it, I think he has like forty counties he serves, even though he doesn't see her. So we have, we have, have formed and are still forming a local complete count committee that includes representatives from a wide range of organizations and groups and trusted voices that have connections within the community. The committee is going, is having, has subcommittees to focus on outreach efforts to different segments of the population. We have, excuse me, we have hard to count individuals in this state and in the United States. Those are your young children, zero to five, individuals of color, poverty, people living in poverty, those with limited English, and those immigrants, and those living in rural areas, and you know we got a few of those, and also college students. So we're trying to make sure that we can do a special reach out for those folks. What, how you gonna do the census? Well, first, they're gonna send out a letter mid-March to everybody. They're gonna have a letter, and it's gonna have a phone number and a special code number. You go go, and we're gonna go, probably, if anyone's room mostly, just gonna go on the internet, put that number in, and give them the information they ask for. They're gonna wanna know your name, how many people living in your home on April first, 2020. They're wanna know whether you own your own home or you renting, what the sex of each person is or, except for this gender, the age of each person, and what their ethnicity is, and the relationship with the people that live in the home to each other. Babies that are born on April first will be included if they live, if they're going to the Uriside in that home. So we've reached out to the hospital and for that kind of stuff. Okay, for those people that didn't do that on April first, or didn't do what the letter said to do, they'll send out another letter between March sixteenth and twenty-four. They still haven't responded, they'll send out a postcard between March twenty-sixth and April third, and a fourth letter, April eighth, for which will include a paper questionnaire. Because here's gonna be the challenge, a lot of people don't have internet or don't have access. I just found out today that the local library is getting twenty new computers, plus twenty, plus they have twenty laptops. So we're gonna do an outreach to them to make sure that they will be available. They're gonna do training to help people at the local library. We've outreach to the churches and to the various organizations, nonprofits. And then on May thirteenth, for those who still haven't responded, that's when they're gonna send the people out to knock on the doors. Knock on the doors till May thirteenth. But we still have until July thirty-first to get everybody counted. So we're gonna try to make a much better showing this year than they did in 2010. Anybody got any questions?
How much did you say that we get for each?
Twenty-three hundred dollars.
Per person?
Per person.
Just in Ware County?
In, throughout the United States.
Do we get, do we actually get in cash to, for some program in the, in the Ware County, twenty-three hundred dollars for every person?
Now, Mr. Burke, you know, these are government numbers. These numbers come from the government.
You can't guarantee them.
But, but that is the published figure for each?
Yes, yes, sir.
Each one count?
We've got plenty of handouts here. We've got plenty of handouts, right there.
What we need is the people to go fill out the paperwork. If they want this government and city and county, and all over the United States to get the money that they supposed to get in grants, you gotta be part of filling out this paperwork.
That's why I asked for this thankful job.
It's hard for some people, they just can't fill that out.
Because every job I ever had in, you know, where I actually had benefits, I was working for the federal government even when I was teaching at school because my contract said, if we don't get the federal fund, you ain't got a job.
I think you get a fill out.
And every year, I send a whole pile of money to the family, and I'm like for it to come back here a little bit more.
I understand.
We a hundred percent.
All right.
Thank you for, thank you for what you doing, and thank you for the committee that's in support.
Well, everybody I contacted so far has been very eager to help. It's just a time factor, you know? I just sit around the house all day and eat bonbons, but some people actually have real jobs.
A lot of people don't take it serious, and they don't be allowed to act for it.
No, they don't, but, you know, we can put dollars behind it, it makes a lot, a little bit more motivation. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Jennifer, we appreciate you.
Okay, Mr. Manager, we'll get right into our agenda. Commissioner?
One thing I wanna point out, we have another visitor here on our Needham Road repair proposal, folks from Clinton, I think they're here somewhere. Oh, they're back out here, and I was gonna see if they would take just a minute and present their proposal on repairs to the Needham Roads, and that way we can try to get that resolved. I don't know if you have anything to hand out. I emailed something to the commission on what their proposal was to make the repairs to the Needham Road, but I don't know. Trent, are you, have you had a chance to look at it, or Brandon, y'all, have y'all looked at it?
We want a report to give our people out there on that road. We're getting hit hard because of this.
Yes, sir, I know, I understand. We got, we received from the Blue Land Enterprises last Friday, a letter stating what they were wanting to do. It was accompanied by a spreadsheet of areas as well as a map of the areas that they were willing to repair. And so what my plan was, is I was gonna go back out there. We had recommended more than what they are willing to do at this point. Part of my goal this afternoon, as after this meeting, is to go out and walk it and look, look at my books on the ground and see if I can make a recommendation back to you. So I have not been able to put my full recommendation to you as far as what their report says. They are here to answer any questions if you need to, or I'll be in force to make sure that they're taken care of.
All this commission asks us our road to be put back like it was. We spent, we made money to resurface that road in less than three years, and then it gets, that section, I guess, tore up pretty bad. All we want is put back.
Yes, sir. I can put it back.
In as good or better condition than it was?
Yes, sir.
I understand, we want it put back right.
I've got your direction.
We don't, we don't really a patch looking job, those have patches out there. We want to have a monolithic surface, just like, just went through it with a spreader and doesn't hold job.
Yes, sir. Your direction. Most of the biggest difference is seeing to figure your figure and their figure, they all want to do. I'm looking more for what Commissioner Carter had recommended, a smooth surface, completely overlaid with some deeper asphalt and some of the areas that are filled more, and theirs is more just to fix the failing areas.
Yeah.
That's the biggest difference. I think Scott sent out to you the map, so you should be able to.
Yeah, we all got that.
But they're here to answer questions today, if you have anything from them, and we'll be making our report back to you on what we.
Mr., y'all got anything you want to ask the contractors?
I have.
Y'all got, you got it, Mr. President?
Well, I just, Chairman, I, I want that road fixed for them people like it was.
That's, that's, that's the mission.
If there's not gonna be fixed like it was, I don't want nobody going out there patching. And we're not trying to, you know, put a burden on the contractor. We want the contractor to feel like that it was his responsibility to keep that road like it should have been. And it was not built for those kind of roads, and it should be redressed and fixed for it. I hope that they understand that, and it won't be anything less.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
On your direction.
Appreciate you very much. All right, Mr. Manager, Tab A, I need to ask that the pool of the leasee for the hanger changed his mind, so he was asking to have that withdrawn.
That's just one single new hanger lease agreement. So if you would, we can just pull that and just move on to Tab B, which is the chairman.
Y'all okay without getting that?
All right. Why are we talking about that? Did we ever clean this hanger unit out that was full of?
Well, we thought we'll address that.
Okay.
Not, not right now, sir.
All right.
Okay, all right. Out of B, you said?
Yes, sir. Under Tab B is, there's a, in your packet, there's a list of renewals. These are property leases. There's, and the reason why is because there was a lease price increase, and you'll see there a table of what the new rate is to the far right, and this is for these to be renewed. I have a copy of these, I didn't bring them with me, they're in the office, but there's a, there's a list of those that need to be renewed, and the name, the location of where these folks live, and the amount that they're leasing. So it's just, it's all in one package.
I think this is just, over the years, whenever we developed and built all those T-hangers, that we developed decent and over so many years, and they increased on a ten years basis, not every year, but on a pro-rate basis.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, some time ago in some meeting, we talked about the increases that should have took place, so now that's what this is for, and the change is good to it, so they're all reading together.
Commissioner, y'all got any questions for the manager? Do they need the individual hanger in the order, the paint arrived here in there for it, with lines out there? Yeah, one of them, that leader. And the leases for the land that it's sitting on. Except the buildings that we own, those T-hangers we own, airport owns. All right, any further questions?
Does the worst sound, do they keep up, they supposed to keep up those grounds?
Yes, sir, they do. Inside are raining, that little area right outside. Any more questions? Mr. Y'all okay, place out on the agenda?
I don't see.
Okay, under Tab C is request to purchase some playground replacement equipment for the rec apartment. This is being purchased off a purchasing cooperative, which is like the state contract. There's information included in your package about what's being proposed, and it would be paid out of the 2014 spots for the recreation apartment in the amount of sixty-three thousand one seventy-five fifty-five. And it is to replace on the use side of the complex, the equipment that's out there now.
And that's original?
Is there anything else you need to add to that? Anything that you think?
Come up, come up to, that's original equipment that's out there after rain.
Correct, yeah.
That's the place we built.
Yeah, 2003, I think is the installation date of those, and through the starting to show its age, all of our playgrounds are starting to show their age now. We've just kind of, in the last six months, kind of prioritized which ones need to be addressed sooner than later. That one's surface, I don't know if any of you have been out there lately, but the surface has started to get pitted in several areas, and also the foreign place surface is probably pulled back from the concrete buffer about six inches, so it creates some sort of trip hazard that goes along with it. Also, the equipment itself has started to rust through several places where we actually had a couple of instances.
That could be dangerous.
Towards the end of our, like, our tournament schedule, where we had to manage a couple of kids up, so it's more prevalent now than it has been.
This is equipment attached to the concession stand between, in the middle of all fields. I was out there yesterday looking at it, it's deteriorated.
These being replaced.
Yeah, the surface more so than the playground, but this one that we are proposing to get also comes with an integrated shade that would allow kids to stay off of the hot surface and also, you know, prolong the life of that material as well.
Okay, any further questions for our director?
Yeah, I mean, what was the reason for making the statement, not responsible for any damage to sidewalks?
I think it's just standard, standard language with them when they're hauling stuff in, that it's gonna have to get from point A to point B, if they try to bypass any.
We don't have any way of getting to it without damaging sidewalks.
Well, I don't think they will damage any sidewalks, but they kind of ruin themselves off. The path that goes in, you would probably come in from the area closest to the, closest to the gym and come straight in through that large gate there, so they should be able to get a pretty straight shot line and go up and over it in two minutes.
All right. Okay, any more questions? There you go. Commissioner, y'all okay? Place that's on the agenda. Out of D?
Under Tab D is request to award contract to East Coast Asphalt from an amount of one million, three hundred and fifty thousand, eighty-one dollars and ninety-nine cent for resurfacing of roads in Jamestown, Community Drive areas, East Washington Avenue, Harris Road, and Smith Road. This is part of the list, or a portion of the list, that we have in our local T-spots for resurfacing in the space to, three contractors bid, this listed there in your packet, and East Coast was the lowest.
We got a list of those streets, remember?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's a list there, as you flip back, you'll see maps of locations.
And some here, yeah.
Yeah, pictures, I don't, of some of the, some of these streets are in pretty bad shape.
And those roads there is probably, that's original painting, probably.
That I don't, that I don't know, but I don't know. If Michael, I don't know.
The ones in Jamestown are all that?
Ones in Jamestown?
That's old. Fifty years ago. Probably fifty years plus. Okay, the rest is all okay? Put it on the agenda, Mr. Manager? All right, out of B, wetlands, purpose?
Okay, under Tab E is request to purchase fifteen point two wetland mitigation credits in the amount of seventy-six thousand dollars from the Musket Bay Mitigation Bank for our core running engineers requirement for the ABC Avenue Extension Project.
That's D.
In the amount of seventy, I mentioned, seventy-six thousand dollars, fifteen point two mitigation credits.
And we go to start at two point nineteen acres, that price is sixty-six thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to make that point. It's expensive. Anytime you mess with wetlands, price pay. Okay, the rest is all okay? Do that? All of these, okay?
This is just one, I wanna point out that this is just one of the requirements that we have through the core. So once we do this, we have to submit proof that we purchased these credits, and then they keep moving it.
I said two areas, the two wetland areas.
Yes, sir.
Do these credits be brought back to Ware County, to Ware County, or they be going?
Just for this project. Just for this project. If we do another one, we'll pay you.
What I'm saying, pay the same amount of, by the way, credits.
This is outside of our area.
Don't they take the money and invest it in? Redefine it.
I don't believe they do. I don't, I don't think they do, no sir. This goes to a whole nother location altogether.
I know over there, where you disturbed the land out there, hit that main rung, wet airport, six thousand feet, we had to buy land from over there in Addison County.
Yeah, it was west of here, I couldn't remember where, what, Marion County? I think it was Marion County. I think it was Marion, whatever, I remember, I think it was Marion.
Well, this is in the Musket Bay area. That's one of the things we never understand, but we got to do it if we getting ready to stuff. All right, everybody okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Manager. Out of F?
Under Tab F is Resolution 2020 dash one, it's the first resolution of this calendar year. It is to set the qualification fees for elected offices there for the 2020 primary election, and there's a list of the elected seats and the amount, that's three percent based on the base salary, so this would set those qualification fees for upcoming elections.
These are set by state law, too, pardon?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? There you go. Place out on the agenda, Commissioner, I mean.
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Out of G?
Okay, under Tab G is a request to approve an alcohol license for property that is being sold at Chan Chan's. There is an application attached, it is crossway, excuse me, cross food, or crossway food mall, we got about a minute, at nineteen hundred Alma Highway. This is a, for a new owner, there is an existing license there now, and the applicant is, is free of any disqualifier, so everything checks out.
Everything checks out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Y'all okay? Okay, Mr. Manager? Out of H, a whole week.
Yes, sir. Under Tab H is a proposed drug-free workplace policy revision. This is a policy that was reviewed by a staff of employees, and also our county attorney has reviewed this policy. I put a copy of it there in front of you to make some changes of what needed to be done. Teresa, can you speak to this a lot, y'all met with, met about, corrected?
So, being that we had some issues with the way we do our drug screens here, everything is done with a urine sample, which is okay for drugs, but to test alcohol, the level of alcohol someone's system, because it's not illegal to pursue alcohol, just we don't want you intoxicated or impaired on the job, we needed a new way to fix the testing. So we want to do, keep the urine testing for the drugs, but do breath alcohol testing for the alcohol, and that way we get an accurate reading. Because somebody may have gone home after work, after hours, off the clock, had a beer or two, and then if they get chosen for a random screening the next morning, there may be some trace amounts that will show up in a urine test, but if you have them blow a breathalyzer, they're under the legal limit, or it may not show up at all. So doing some research and dealing with some issues, myself and our committee, we have committee reviewing some of the policies, came up with these revisions that we ran through legal, so you have the revised copy of what we're proposing. And it will also include all employees and not just public safety and law enforcement, because that was the policy before, that it just covered those. We thought it best that every employee be submitted to random testing. So between those two, and then the, there's a proposal in there to change the vendor that we're using, because we've had some problems with getting results on time, chain of custody of the sample when it's over in the facility that we use currently. So to avoid all that, we have some proposals in there for pricing for new vendors also.
So do you have a reputation here?
Yes, sir. St. Vincent's.
From St. Vincent's?
Yes, sir.
And that's low for a lot over here.
Yes, and we use them for our pre-employment physicals already, and their service is awesome, don't have problems getting results back.
They're all out there.
Yes, sir.
So who's gonna do your breathalyzer, Sheraton?
Who's gonna do them?
Breathalyzer, they don't do that in St. Vincent's.
They do them, yes. Actually, all three facilities I got pricing on do them.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions for this policy?
I support this a hundred percent, although in the past couple of months, an employee got a bad test or something, or was sent home, and it really wasn't justified, and I think Teresa, the committee she had, just clean it up, you know, a new vendor, the employees won't have to be going to the drug court, they haven't been convicted of anything, you have a hospital setting, chain of command with samples. given a hospital setting, chain of command with the samples, and it's recommended by another department, medical director. So I'll support this and, um, ask the commissioners to support it.
Commissioner Y'all okay?
Yes, sir.
Put it on the agenda, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think that'd keep us from having any drugs on the payroll.
You know, we, we just want all our employees treated fair and square.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
We want them to be safe on the job, cause we work for the public.
Right.
All right, those statements. All right. Let's see here, Mr. Manager. Got a couple of, uh, let's do three packets here. Get back to the front. All right, uh, Commissioner Adams.
Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, excuse me, I passed up six here. Both of us for calendar year twenty twenty, Vice Chairman, Murray County Board of Commissioners. Uh, I'd recommend.
Yeah, we'll have to head that one, that was one of them.
What was that, Library, Library Board? Yeah.
Mr. Carter serves on?
That's right. Do you want to continue on the Library Board?
If you find.
All right. Put Commissioner, uh, Carter.
The only thing, though, that the Library Board meets when we have our second meeting of each month.
Yes, sir.
They meet on the fourth Monday at the same time.
They may have to change here.
Well, I tried to get them to change and they said, uh, in honor of the circumstances, they would be unable to change. Well, that was every, you know, reason in the world they had. So. I've been, I've been able to attend two meetings.
Can we, can we appoint an individual or?
No, Commissioner.
I, I'd have to look at their, I was gonna say, I'd have to look and make work on that and see how it's going.
Bring that back, bring that back.
We certainly can check into it and give you an answer tonight.
Yeah, 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 we certainly want to do what's leaving.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, uh, I, I'm gonna recommend, uh, it's all right with the commission to, if the commissioner helps him. Well, I'm gonna, uh, rest for boot. Do you want to be the vice chairman? That's my recommendation.
I've appointed, I will serve.
Sorry?
About, I've appointed, I will serve.
I guess he's a board. Okay, put Commissioner Pope as the vice chairman. Ex-FICO member of Downtown Waycross Development Authority, he's done a good job there. Commissioner Pope, you want to stay there on that one too?
Yes.
Well, let's, let's be sure we don't spend two million dollars now on a bun building like we've been accused to do.
Yeah, I heard that's on the street, two million dollars.
Can't leave somebody to make that statement. That's a private enterprise. Well, that's the reason this man said he voted against the S-Plots Act. Said, y'all spent two million dollars on the, on the bun building. No, we don't, no, we didn't, we can't, wouldn't if we could. It's not a problem. But again, sorry, I had to say that. If truth ain't been told, then I, I get offended. Okay, commissioners? Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Pope, you got everything?
Yes, so thanks, uh, initiatives come up. From what I understand, I'd like to request the, um, executive session before our regular meeting.
Okay.
To discuss personnel.
All right. Commissioner Y'all okay with taking the session? This will come after our regular meeting.
Regular meeting? Sure. I can't do it before we go.
Then we do it before. I think we can definitely decide that.
Well, we, we, yeah, we've talked about this in the past, so there are, there are varying opinions on it. Um, well, our firm has taken the opinion that an executive session during a work session is proper and appropriate. Um, however, and I think I've communicated with this to you all, there are attorneys across the state who are excellent attorneys who have taken a different position. And so I think in the past, um, at least my understanding was this commission decided to, to, uh, do it during the meeting itself. But some of our counties do in fact have executive sessions during the work session, so.
I think since we have our, we have to kill for a meat source, you're even up there through it.
And, and we have rendered an opinion in the past that that is allowable to have during a work session.
Yes, sir. Y'all okay with that? I agree, we'll go into the executive session as soon as this.
As soon as this meeting is over.
Yes, sir.
Well, we'll, it, we'll, we'll still be part of this meeting, we'll take a vote. This is a way to go into executive session and we will, um, state for our, our work session minutes the reason for that executive session being personnel.
Okay. You got any comments? Got any comments?
I just want to say these are very big, big, so.
I think they should be off to who? People get off the plane and get done. All right, Commissioner Carter.
Well, the only thing I, I've got two items and one of them is the, well, three items, one of them is the, uh, uh, time of our meetings. I still would like to see us consider, again, changing our meeting hours so that the working man can be in our meeting. And, uh, I know we've talked about that in the past, but, uh, I'm, I'm real serious about it, cause I get a bunch of people talking to me about it. I don't know about y'all. So I like to put that in, in the record anyway, that we want to have, have that. And, uh, one, another item is the, uh, uh, what's one? Scout Lake out there is a city-owned property. And, uh, they don't wanting to develop a park out there. And they, I understand the city don't have really motivator, uh, people. And they're trying to keep the cost of this thing within very low limits. They wanted to know if we will do a little motivator work there on the corner. And I brought it up to the, our, uh, county manager and he said he didn't see anything wrong with it. Uh, so I'd like for us to be aware that, uh, it's been asked, uh, right there on the front, between Augusta Avenue and around there to Cherokee. I think it must be like a hundred and fifty feet by two hundred feet. So to help clear it off, so people can walk in that area. And, uh, so I told him I, as far as I'm concerned, I'd like for our county manager to work that out with the, uh, manager of, of the Okanagan Heritage Center, Mr. Baldwin, I believe it is. I don't know if he's manager.
Are you talking about, are you talking about on the west side?
Yes, on the west side.
That's right. Well, let's take more to motivator. Don't place screwed up.
Well, they not going down in the woods. It's just right up there on the front, sort of. They don't want to clear up too much, they want both of the trees and stuff left.
Still don't have to have some size of motivator.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm sure that they can work it out with our, our county manager and, uh, and our public works director, if you fellows, let's go along with it.
Have they already presented this to the city? Since the city owns.
City needs to prove.
The city's already, the city's already been going along with it.
And they proved it.
And so he brought it to me and asked me would I look at it. I said, I don't see nothing wrong with it. I said, main thing is to be sure it's public property. I said, we can't get on private property nowhere and, uh, except maybe the park overnight.
That's can't, it's city property.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So who's gonna buy the playground, stuff like that? It's gonna be a walking track.
It's more or less walking and they're gonna build, there's other people involved and they're gonna build a shelter or two and things like that.
They're gonna have to clean that place up?
Yeah.
Only, I'd like to see it back like it was when I was a boy.
Yeah.
That was a beautiful park.
Yeah, well, that's what they want to do, but, uh, they can't, they can't do it by themselves and we ought to do, work together as a community to get it done.
S-Plots Act.
I'll leave that in. Yours hands, I, I'm all for it, I'll live.
Anything in the house in that area, yeah. They should build a nice big buildings that know wherever people live on, so.
But I'd like for us to be able to grant that, uh, authority to our county manager and our, uh, public works director to look into it, see if they can't get it done.
Do you know how much, do you know how much work it costs?
I don't, I, I just, I'm.
I gave him my little.
There's, he's got a little drawn diagram of what they're looking at and doing. So I'll just go out there and look with him, look, might as well look, take a look at it and see what, what it's all about.
Did you see if he gonna help in?
Oh, I, I had no idea, I was just, I was just.
Give you the authority if the city had started discussion.
Yeah, how, how the Heritage Center, city.
Right, right, since they own the property.
Okay. Anybody else have anything you want to say? All right, uh, Mr. Manager.
Uh, I don't have anything.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, now I'll turn.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do we have, just one more minute, do we have a problem with anything out at the rec center with excrement from buzzards or, uh, geese? Do we have that?
Uh, I mean, from time to time, we seen the house ninety percent of the vulture population. The geese just made their way back, on any given day, we probably got about a hundred and fifty buzzards flying around somewhere.
Well, I, I had an individual to call about it and I told him, I said, well, the only thing I know to do is talk with the director and see what he can, him and Mr. Moy can work out.
Yeah, we went through the youth side today and, um, by the, by the concession area, it's gonna take a good bit of pressure washing before we get ready for, for that season. But it seems to be their main congregation area is the youth side and they really love the batting cage, so they should all hit really well.
Well, they got a, they got a path from the Baptist village over my house to the recreation fund. And all the buzzards, they come from George Power right straight from here. They, they land about a hundred there.
They don't roost on the George Power.
Okay. Anything else? All right. I'll entertain a motion to go with the executive.
Would you say move? Are we voting, what?
No, no, this is go with the executive session. Okay, our motion, the executive.
We're moving, I'm saying, moving.
For?
Executive session to discuss personnel.
All right.
And we do for, I mean, I know it was a vote in a work session. We take a vote for the purpose of having it articulated in the minutes that everyone was in agreement.
Over to the session now. Uh, all right. All right, we do, uh, John, to the executive session, we have two minutes.